All right, welcome everybody. Shall we call the Belvidere City Council Regular Meeting to Order of May 15, 2023? If the clerk will call the roll, please.
Albertini.
Here.
Barriton.
Here.
Flurry.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Freeman.
Here.
McGee.
Here.
Mahal.
Here.
Porter.
Here.
Praether.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Ten present.
All right, if you'll stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its government, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we pray to thank you for our many blessings, for our country, our community, and our freedom. We pray to thank you for all our current military service members and for the brave men and women veterans who have served throughout our country's history. We thank them for their service and sacrifice. Dear God, we thank you for our police and fire first responders in our community and throughout our country. Heroes who answer each call every day to help citizens in need no matter what, and we pray for their safety and well-being. And on this first day of National Police Week, we ask that you be with all our men and women police officers, all law enforcement professionals, recognizing their commitment and their risks. We ask that you keep them safe as they serve our communities, keeping us safe by providing law and order in the performance of their duties. We ask tonight that you give each of us compassion, courage, patience, and wisdom as we conduct our city's business here this evening. We pray for these things in Christ's name. Amen.
All right, under public comment, I did want to express my condolences. I was made aware of the passing of Ann Eichsted this morning. I know Mindy Long is here from Ida Public Library. Mindy, Ann worked at the library with Mindy, and I know it's a tremendous loss for Mindy and the staff at the library, so. Ann also was a reporter for the Belvidere Republican. She had interviewed me at different times, and certainly going to miss her, and I want to give my condolences to her family and all of her friends and her coworkers at the library. Did we have any other public comment? We have nobody else registered for public comment. Item four, the approval of the minutes. A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvidere City Council of May 1, 2023, as presented. Could I get a motion of that effect? Motion by Alderwoman Praether, second by Alderman Albertini. Yes, nice to see you again. All right, yes. All right, is there any questions, any corrections regarding that motion on the floor? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed, motion passed, thank you. Public hearing, we have none. Under special messages and proclamations, we have item A. This is National Police Week, and I have a proclamation here, and I would ask if Chief Woody would join me up here at the podium, please.
First of all, I want to say that, you know, I appreciate all of our law enforcement professionals. I think in Belvidere, we're very fortunate to have law enforcement that care about the community, that when we call, they respond, and I also am grateful for Chief Woody. Chief Woody, I've been in here two years, in this office two years, and I appreciate his professionalism and his caring for the community as well. So we've, I think we're fortunate as a community. And I also think that, I wanted to preface this before I read this proclamation, that it seems like law enforcement has been treated very poorly, and I'll say that as an understatement. Without law enforcement, I think everybody has to understand, and I think they know this, when you call and you need them, if you don't get anybody, then you're going to have chaos. I don't know who else you call. So I am greatly appreciative of that, and I will read this proclamation. The proclamation states, whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy and Congress designated May 15 as National Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as National Police Week. And whereas, the members of the Police Department of the City of Belvidere play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Belvidere. And whereas, it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas, the Police Department of the City of Belvidere has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency which unceasingly provides a vital public service. And now therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Belvidere, call upon all citizens of Belvidere and upon all patriotic civil and educational organizations to observe the week of May 14 through May 20 as National Police Week, in which all of our people may commemorate police officers past and present who by their faithful loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of Belvidere to observe May 15, 2023 as National Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those peace officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of their duty. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Belvidere to be affixed this 15th day of May, 2023.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it, sir.
It's all yours, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate the proclamation. Also appreciate the sentiments. I've said it before, and some of you have made me, maybe heard me say it. The City of Belvidere has been absolutely fantastic, not only to me but my family. And ever since I became a police officer and, you know, since being appointed as your police chief, I've made it a point to try and repay what this city has done for me and my family every day since. So for that, I'm very humbled, and I can't thank this city enough, thank the council, and thank the mayor especially. So if you don't mind, I would like to just provide a little bit of background and information as far as National Police Memorial Week. We take time to honor the men and women who serve our community and keep it safe. But we also remember those who paid the ultimate sacrifice. If you'll take a moment and look at the photograph up here. Friday morning, regional police departments will gather for the Memorial Breakfast hosted by the Northern Illinois Multi-Jurisdictional Honor Guard. During the ceremony, they erect the Table of the Fallen, as you see pictured here in the middle. They bring out each item one by one as they explain the meaning behind them. The table is round to show our everlasting concern for our fallen officers. The tablecloth is black, symbolizing the mourning of their loved ones. The blue ribbon, symbolic of our continued determination to remember our fallen officers. The single red rose, a reminder of the life of each fallen officer, loved and missed by their family and community. A slice of lemon, a reminder of the bitter fate of peace officers killed in the line of duty. A pinch of salt, symbolizing the tears shed by family, friends, and fellow officers. A lit candle, reminiscent of the light of hope which continues to shine. The glass inverted, for they cannot toast with us. The chair is empty, because they are no longer with us. Let us remember and never forget their sacrifice. The Honor Guard concludes the ceremony with the reading of the names of the fallen. Part of the proclamation that the mayor just read says that it's important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department. One way to do that is by inviting all of the aldermen and those of you who may be listening at home who haven't had the opportunity to take part in our Citizens Police Academy, to dedicate a couple hours a week learning about what your police department does and why we do it. We teach things from patrol, SWAT, detectives, gangs, drugs investigation, and organizational structure. It helps the community walk away with a different perspective about policing and allows an officer an opportunity to better understand the citizen's point of view. I want to thank the aldermen who have taken advantage of this opportunity in the past, and I look forward to seeing those of you who haven't had the opportunity yet. So I will conclude with this. May God protect those who protect the rest of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Woody, and if you'd conveyed all your department, all your officers, you know, our thanks to each and every one of them. Appreciate it.
Sorry, I didn't realize this was off. So these projects, we've had 85 projects since the beginning of January. Eighteen of those are doing due diligence. About another 29 are currently in commitment or construction field. So this is actually our numbers by the end of April. We've also been working with the Enterprise Zone Committee to modify levels of incentives for projects based on their investment. So we're assisting, and there's going to be, and we invite everyone to the public hearing scheduled at 6:00 PM on Thursday, May 18, at the Boone County Administration Building. And just to give you a little bit of highlights, in addition to the base property, so right now, the incentives for property tax incentives for the Enterprise Zone program is at 80%, followed by 60%, 40%, 20% over a four-year period. What we're proposing is that we look at some mid-level property tax abatements as well as high-level property tax abatements. This would be based on the company's investment. So the higher the investment, the better the opportunity for property tax abatements. So these are just some of the proposed, I just wanted to kind of share with you that we're all working together on trying to see this, try to be more competitive. And the reason that we're doing this is because there's a number of communities within our region that are more competitive with Enterprise Zone benefits as well as other incentives. So we don't have the TIF districts like the City of Rockford does. They have a number of them in their higher-growth opportunity areas. So this will give us more competitive advantage in our region. I also wanted to highlight some upcoming events. We have an investor volunteer appreciation, which I think you had invitations on your desk in the past. And we have the State of the Economy. We have an advisor with the Federal Reserve Bank of Chicago. They'll be speaking on June 21. And it was just brought to my attention that the Illinois Manufacturing Association, which we're going to partner with the region to provide information on workforce in the manufacturing field, so. And that's going to be in June as well.
Okay, thank you, Pam. Any questions for Ms. Fettis on any of that? All right, hearing none. Thank you, Pam.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, next, we have Mindy Long with Ida Public Library. Hi, Mindy, welcome.
I'm show and tell today. Turn it on. Is it on? Thank you. All right, hello, everyone. I brought show and tell. I'm going to pass it around while I'm talking, so. I'm bringing some binoculars. I'm showing you some binoculars. I'll pass one around on each side. These are binoculars that the library has received courtesy of grants and money from the Rockford Astronomy Association to go along with our telescopes. They'll come with some little brochures about birds in the night sky. They come in these waterproof cases when you check them out from the library for a week. But they will also come with a sort of little soft-sided hiking pack that you can carry them if you're going hiking, so. It's a new addition. We just can, tomorrow will be the first day you can check them out, so. They're very high-powered and they're wonderful, so you can see very far away with them. So that's our latest addition. Thank you, Mayor Morris, for the condolences for Ann, who was a shock to all of us. And I just want to say that I did find out that she was from Union, so her services will be at the Marengo Union. She has a home if you're interested. The newspaper is doing a feature on her next Thursday. They would welcome any photos, any memories anyone would like to share. You can either email me for the contact info, or you could just send it to me, and that will be next Thursday. They would need those by Friday, so. I also want to say that Ann was not from our community. She was from Union, but she adopted this community like it was her own. She was highly devoted to the city, to all the city council, to the city government. She was extremely devoted to the fire department and to the police department, so we will miss her greatly. Okay, so now on to the regular things, and she would say, "Let's move on," as she would always say. So the telescopes have been going really, really well. We're checking them out like crazy. We have one right now available out of the three, but they have been going really well since we had all these meteor showers and all these interesting night sky events, so. They're a very wonderful addition to the library. We are planning our summer reading kickoff party for Saturday, June 10. Be sure to be there if you can. It's going to be really fun. We have a lot of vendors, about 50 vendors will have, and organizations will have tables. We have a lot of inflatable games, just a lot of cool stuff. We have J. and Seal Fish and Ice Cream there, and we have Big John's Dog and Marge Food Truck will be there, so it'll be a lot of fun. And that kicks off our eight-week summer reading program. You'll get some information on the program and the prizes that we'll be giving out all summer to encourage everyone to keep reading, especially students, even though schools now keep reading throughout the summer slide, so. That will be Saturday, June 10. We're working on all of our summer programs. Our theme this year is Have Book, Will Travel, so we have some kind of fun programs. We're going to have a Korean lantern-making hybrid program where the instructor is from South Korea, and she will be on Zoom. We will be getting kits for each participant sent to us, and she will show us how to make these wonderful Korean lanterns. We have a genealogy 101 workshop with the Winnebago and Boone Genealogy Association, which will be the first time we've had them come in. They'll be there once a month. If you want any kind of information or tips on how to find your ancestry, they'll be there to help you. We are going to, we're having a wonderful program. It's Latin hip-hop as poetry. And the host of this program is a Chicago radio show, a woman who hosts the Chicago radio show Beat Latino, and she's a Rhodes Scholar, so she'll be having a wonderful program. It's going to be very interactive, a lot of Latino, Latin music, hip-hop music, so we'll learn a little bit about Latin hip-hop. So try to be there for that. That'll be fun. We also are going to be celebrating the Women's World Cup Soccer in our lawn with skill testing and events, so you'll keep an eye out for that. And we are going to have an American Girl Party also, because it's very popular. People still like the American Girl dolls, so we're going to have an American Girl Tea Party, so. We did reach out to the Windy City Lego Club out of Chicago. They are a club who builds the most wonderful Lego exhibits you've ever seen. They're fascinating, they're elaborate, and they will be here this summer to have them on showcase at our library, so that'll be fun, too. Also, Friday, June 23, is the United Nations Public Service Day that recognizes the hard work and effort of all public servants worldwide. We're going to be hosting a de-stress for public servants day that day from 10:00 to 2:00, or 10:00 to 3:00, I'm sorry. It's a day where you can come in and have some treats. We'll have coloring books and crayons, because yes, adults color, and it's a great way to de-stress when you're sitting down coloring and relaxing. We'll have the comfort dogs there. We might have some other relaxation activities. We're still working on that, so. Anyone can come. If you're on work or off work, just stop in and just relax a little bit. And then we are looking at launching a home delivery service soon on a very limited trial basis. So this will be for homebound patrons who just can't get out of their house. They'll be able to request, I think it's three books we're going to start out with instead of five, and they'll be delivered to their home by a staff member. So we're going to start it up in a couple weeks. We're still working out the details, so. And then I do want to say that we are have, we did have some damage to the library roof and to the church roof next door from the storm, the bad storm. We are going to be having that, those roofs repaired Thursday and Friday. So if you drive by, you'll see pallets of roofing material. You know what that is. Our insurance paid for just about all of the damages. We only had to pay our small deductible. So the church is getting a completely entire new roof, and then we're getting, we had about four tiles damaged that had to be replaced, so. So don't think, don't be like, "Whoa, what's the library spending money on?" No, it's all paid for by the insurance company, so. So that's it. Any questions for me for anything going on at the library?
Any questions for Ms. Long? All right.
Okay, thank you so much.
Nice to see you, Mindy. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Alderwoman Frank.
Mayor, I was sad to see that you had to cancel the book sale.
Yes.
And I was just wondering, is there anything that somebody else could fill in, like we could fill in?
Yes, so what happened was they needed to have 50 volunteers to run the book sale, and they didn't get the commitment from 50 volunteers to run it. So it's a long, it takes a lot of people to run that book sale. It's huge. Well, you all know, most of you have been to it. We do plan on having one in the fall. They're having a change of leadership right now at the Friends of the Library, so we're not sure where it's going to end up, but they're still hoping to have one in the fall. And yes, you can volunteer if you'd like. You do not have to be a member of the Friends to volunteer to help. You do not have to live in Belvidere. You can just call us up and get on the signing sheet. I have a signing sheet that people can sign up for if they would like to volunteer for a future book sale, so. Yeah, we do have to get rid of some of those books. We've got, I don't even know how many cases. I can't, I don't even know. Yeah, and they're all in storage, so we can't take anything else because we have nowhere to put anything, so. Good question. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Frank. Any other questions for Mindy? All right, hearing none. Thank you, Mindy.
You're welcome.
Have a good evening. All right, item seven, under approval of expenditures, we have general and special fund expenditures in the amount of $1,854,888.8. Could I have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderwoman Praether, second by Alderman McGee. Thank you. Any questions regarding the expenditures in front of you? Alderwoman Frank?
Thank you, Mayor. It's not really a question. I have somebody that always wants me to tell them why the amount is high. -tell them why the amount is high. And the budget finance person is really good about helping me. Thank you, Ms. Anson. So, mainly it's salaries, insurance, pensions. Basically, the things that are just standard, but they're just unreasonable. They're just higher at this point. And that's all I have for the general. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. It is a cost of doing business, that's for certain. Any other questions? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So, I just had a couple. One for Chief Woody. So, Shane, on page 13, can you tell me what stopstick kits are? Is that like self-explanatory, what we see on TV where they roll out the things that people run over and when you set up a perimeter and it pops their tires?
Yep, stopsticks, exactly, just that. Anytime a vehicle's fleeing away and a supervisor authorizes it, he can either delegate that authority to an officer or if he decides to utilize them himself, we have a policy and procedure set in place on how to go about deploying them. And ultimately, it's with the intent to try and bring that vehicle to a stop without colliding into either anyone or anything else.
Thank you. And then Brent, on page 24, can you just tell me what IPSI training is?
It is the Illinois Public Service Institute. It's a three-year course. We have- we partner up through with the- our APWA, American Public Works Association Northwest Branch that we are members of. They pay the majority of the enrollment fee for the course. And then the city makes up a little bit. I think they pay like 600. We pay 100 of the enrollment fee and then the housing, the hotel room accommodation for the employee. The employee that was in this one came to us, a newer employee from Elgin. He went through the first two years of the course in Elgin. And when we discussed him coming to work for Belvidere, we indicated that we had put him through for the third year here. We've had, I think, two or three other employees of Belvidere that go through this program with the goal of having hopefully more of our public works employees go through it. It's basically overall training in the public works profession, how to deal with the public, kind of more of perhaps on an administration end, just on the means and methods of what we do on an in-and-out basis. So, it's good training for our guys.
Thank you. And then I just had one more. I guess it's for all department heads or maybe the mayor could answer for everybody. As far as the storm goes, was there any city-owned or controlled property or equipment that was damaged or might need being repaired? Like specifically, maybe like roof damage on Fire Station 1 because it was right in the path. I did notice there was a big tree down by well number eight that took out some fencing there. Was there- was there anything more?
Well, we had the building, the building, Butler Building or whatever you want to call it, over across from North Main Street behind Ace Hardware to the north of Ace Hardware. That building was pretty much demolished. I think there was a truck inside of that and whatever else may have been in there. Just so that the council understands, the governor had made that. And I EMA, it was an emergency declaration here, not only for the City of Belvidere but for the county. It also asked Congressman Foster regarding a FEMA declaration for the City of Belvidere and for potentially other communities that have been affected in the state. That's still pending, but the City of Belvidere will turn in anything that is not covered. There were certain expenses as well on the evening of the storm. Those will be covered and I'm hopeful. I don't know, Brent may have more information regarding any insurance or anything regarding that, but I do believe we've turned in everything regarding any city potential losses.
Yeah, we have a pretty lengthy list of items that were turned in. Probably I can give you a better overall summary, probably at the next committee meeting, Public Works Committee meeting where we can log it all down. But for example, I think I just got the final paperwork on tree work, emergency trees, terrace trees that had came down in the storm. I think it was about $28,000 worth of tree removals, tree trimming that we had to do as a result of the storm itself. Of course, our branch pile now has gotten to the point where we need to go ahead and grind that. And a lot of that can be attributed to the- everything we picked up in the right of ways, not only our trees but what the general public brought to the right of ways and the terraces. So, that'll be an additional expense that will be charged to the tornado. As the mayor said, the building was demolished and we had equipment inside that suffered damage. We got our first insurance report back. There's four pieces of equipment, I think, that will be- insurance will be picking up the tab to make those repairs. We- our paver, one of our mowers, one of our mower attachments was included. The building itself, we'll be getting some funding on that as well. But again, we can have a better summary of everything involved, probably at the next committee meeting. We can get that put together.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? All right, hearing none. We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve general and special fund expenditures in the amount of $1,854,888.08. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
And, oh, you didn't let me finish. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please. Thank you. We need a voice vote on this one or we need a roll call on this.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brerton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And item seven, also we have water and sewer fund expenditures in the amount of $723,664.20. Could I have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Porter. Any questions, any comments regarding the expenditures in front of you this evening? Alderwoman Frank?
Thank you, Mayor. Just another item, I just recap this. A third basically is for the wastewater treatment plant improvements. And then I wanted to say to Brent, or Director Anderson, most of our costs were going to go up now pretty much, right, with inflation for like improvements and things.
The expectation is that you will see with the amount of construction work activity that's out there now and coming out, that there will generally be an increase in those costs, yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else with any questions, any comments, any concerns regarding the motion on the floor? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, well, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Brerton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And moving along, item eight, committee reports and minutes of city officers. For the record, items A through H have been placed on file with the city clerk, Sarah Turnipseed's office. However, item I, minutes of the committee of the whole, building, planning, zoning, public works of May 8th, 2023 are in your packet. Could I have a motion for their approval, please? Motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderwoman Prather. Thank you. Any questions, any concerns regarding that motion? Right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed. Okay, motion passed, thank you. We have item nine, unfinished business. We have for a second reading this evening, ordinance 626H, that being an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain personal property regarding police departments, specifically police department vehicles. Could I have a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderwoman Prather, second by Alderman Snow. Thank you. Those have been for us at committee level. The item listed 1 through 5 with the corresponding VIN number is attached as Exhibit A. If there's any questions regarding that, try and take them, try and answer them. All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion for approval of ordinance 626H, well, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brerton?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And item 10, under new business, we have item A, ordinance 627H. That's for a first reading. It'll come back to you. Second reading, that being an ordinance approving a final plan titled Crosslink Business Park Number 2 Subdivision. We have item B, number- ordinance number 628H also has a first reading, that being an ordinance granting a special use to allow indoor commercial entertainment within the planned business district located at 1868 Crystal Parkway. That as well, first reading. It will be back before you. And we have item C, ordinance 629H as a first reading as well, that being an ordinance amending section 110-92, yield intersections of the City of Belvidere Municipal Code to add Grover Street and Beaster Drive as a two-way yield as well. All three of those will be back for a final vote in two weeks. We have motions forwarded out of committee of the whole, building, planning, zoning, and public works of May 8th, 2023. motions out of planning, zoning. Chairman McGee?
Thank you, Mayor. A, motion to consent to and approve the appointment of Kim Coniglio to the Belvidere Historic Preservation Commission for a three-year term ending April 30, 2026.
Okay. We have that motion out of committee. Is there any questions or concerns regarding that motion? All right, I know it's very difficult to find individuals, as I've said before, with- to take the time and make the commitment. I appreciate Kim Coniglio's wanting to volunteer and to do that. So, tell her I said thank you, Ms. Fettis. Okay, hearing nothing, hearing nothing more. All those in favor of the appointment of Kim to the Historic Preservation Commission, well, when their name is called, answer aye. If there's opposed, answer nay or say nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brerton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Thank you, Chairman McGee. Moving on to motions of public works. Chairman Snow?
Thank you, Your Honor. B, motion to approve the 2023 street maintenance program as proposed in the memo dated May 4th of 2023.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee. Any questions, any concerns regarding that motion? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So, Brent, on the first one here, South Appleton Road from Locust to US Route 20. Is that US Route 20, the bypass or Business 20?
The bypass.
Okay, so my question then is, we're thinking about, it's on the table to make that Appleton a four-lane. So, do- I mean, I know it's got potholes, but is it more cost-effective just to patch them and wait and see if we're going to four-lane it? Or how long do these overlays last? Are we just going to be tearing up what we did?
Well, the planning, the planning process right now, we're looking at doing a great separation in addition to the four lanes over the railroad crossings. The planning, the planning portion of that work is probably going to be a 24 to 36 month, two to three-year time period just to do the plan for that. Then you have to go through the engineering review and the actual engineering and do that part of it in the construction. So, you're looking at probably five years before construction starts on some of that project. And our overlays, we hope to get five to seven years on an overlay. Hopefully, wishfully thinking, we could like to see 10, but we haven't been getting that lately. And with the amount of traffic that is on Appleton, I think an overlay is due now. Yeah, I put it off as long as I could thinking that ultimately we'd be doing an improvement. But no, we need to do the overlay now. And I think by the time, it should dovetail right in. The southern portion of that overlay that we're doing will stay in place because we won't be doing that as part of our widening project. It's already going to be in the part that's widened. So, the part that we would be redoing doesn't go as far as what the limits of this overlay is.
Thank you. And then I wanted to ask you about staying on Appleton there, the sinkhole that was farther north. Do we know what caused that or has that been completely, we don't have to worry about that anymore or anymore?
Nope, we don't have to worry about that. That was, for whatever reason, there was a piece of corrugated tile used for storm sewer that was in there and that corrugated metal just basically rusted away to nothing. So, once that did that, that created a void and as rain over time, it just kept washing material out, washing material out until finally it reached the surface of the road and started to cave in. So, that pipe has been replaced and the patch made and that work has been completed.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, in regards to Appleton Road, just a reminder, I thought it was probably prudent not to take the funding at that, at the time they had offered it regarding making that a four-lane if in fact we're going to have more freight along that road, if in fact we're going to have potential for Stellantis to be continuing to make vehicles here and we're going to have train traffic in that regard. And if potentially the noise that we hear about the passenger rail is in fact or perhaps may become a reality, I felt it was probably prudent not to spend taxpayer money on making that a four-lane. I do believe the, you know, the roadway, as Brent had said, who knows what that timeframe may be? Optimistically, we would hope that it would, the overlay would outlive the improvements or at least last as long. And so, it's a sort of a long-term planning, but also a little bit of a hope, a little bit of a, a little bit of an ask that I had asked the state to do in order to help with any train traffic, any crossing traffic, to help with public safety. We always have, you know, a potential, if we have long trains with Stellantis, I think everybody who's lived in Belvidere for any amount of time remembers it wasn't too long ago that we had a three-mile train tying up the city from east to west and cutting off north and south traffic. So, hopefully, hopefully, and I am hopeful, that we'll have a good use of the funds that they're going to give to us and we can move forward at once. So, all right. Alderman Albertini?
I have a question.
Yes, sir. Ask your boy. Oh, yep.
I'm a big advocate. You will be bringing us on for Chrysler Drive, an appendage to the overlay? Because there won't be just an overlay done on Chrysler Drive, is that correct?
Yeah, we're still working out the details on what we need to do. Chrysler Drive has been on the overlay list multiple times in the past and I think we're having some base failure there. So-
failure there. So we may be looking at some additional excavation, additional pavement thickness, perhaps some subbase treatments. We're still looking at those options, what those costs are. I wanted to get it on the list because that, no matter what, we're still gonna put an overlay on it, but there's probably gonna be some more base work that's done to that. So once we come up with the desired plan on that, we will be back to council for approval.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Any other, any other questions regarding the list that you have in front of you this evening regarding the overlays? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you again. So at the bottom there, it's the, the regulations require the ADA compliant sidewalk. Do most of these already have ADA compliant sidewalks, or are we gonna be putting in a lot more of those?
This list, I would say it's probably averaged what we've been doing in the last several years, and the, the cost for the ADA portions comes out of our public benefit funds.
So are we getting close to being compliant with all sidewalks yet?
No, unfortunately not.
All righty, you're welcome. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, hearing none. Motion, all those in favor, the motion to approve the 2023 street, street maintenance program as proposed in the memo dated May fourth, 2023. Will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Chairman Snow?
C, motion to approve the low bid from Northern Illinois Services in the amount of $706,478.50 for the Irene Hockey 16-inch water main extension. This work will be paid from, from line item number 61-4810-4510, connection fee and DCEO grant funds.
Okay, we have a motion out of committee. Any questions regarding that motion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, the motion on the floor, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Item D, Chairman Snow?
D, motion to approve the proposal from CES Inc. in the amount not to exceed $105,200 to complete the construction engineering for the Irene Road realignment project. This work will be paid for from the capital funds with reimbursement from the grant funds.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee. Is there any questions or concerns regarding that motion on the floor? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And motions out of public safety, Chairman Flurry.
Thank you. E, motion to outfit 160 for ALS and Water Rescue Response, not to exceed $16,500 to be paid for out of the capital fund.
Okay, thank you. We have that motion out of committee. Is there any questions or concerns regarding the motion on the floor? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Chairman Flurry?
F, motion to approve the low bid from Window World to replace five windows at Fire Station One at a cost of $6,252 to be paid for out of line item 01-05-220-6010.
Okay. We have that motion out of committee, and then I know that there was an outstanding question, maybe a couple regarding the windows, and I know Chief Shadle had come up with a couple answers to those questions. So Chief?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Your Honor. Alderman Albertini, you asked two main questions. The one was, are the current windows still under warranty? And unfortunately, what's broken on them is the hardware, mostly the balancers that are inside the window that allow it to raise and close, and those only had a two-year warranty, so those are in fact out of warranty. You had also asked the new windows to be installed by Window World, what the warranty was on those, and those windows have a lifetime warranty, and that does include the hardware as well.
Thank you for getting that information from me, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So Sean, we budgeted $12,000 for six windows. I believe we made, that was made mention of. So how many more windows do we need, and why are we only doing five?
We had budgeted for six windows, and we had gotten two bids, and oftentimes when we get bids so far in advance for budgeting, we don't know exactly what it's going to be six months later. So the one bid was 20,000, and the other bid was eight or 9,000. One of the windows circumstantially was actually completely blown in the night of the tornado. So that's what brought us down to the five windows, as that was insurance issue for that one, since it was physically damaged by the wind. So then it brought us down to five, and then Window World also gave us a discount. And so instead of raising the price, it actually went down. So fortunately, it was much less than we had budgeted for. The other windows are operating normally, and we hope that they have a much longer life and, and don't need immediate replacement. But these, those six were unable to open and close, and so with the one being physically pushed in by the storm that brought us to the five, and then again, the price was lower, so that was a, a good thing.
So you don't see any more windows needing to be replaced in the near future at all?
Well, I certainly hope not, but the, all the other ones are, are operating normally.
Okay, and these are the ones that tilt in, so you can clean them on the inside?
Correct.
Thank you.
All righty. Any other questions? Okay, we have the motion to approve the low bid from Window World to replace five windows at Fire Station One at a cost of $6,252 to be paid out of line item 01-05-220-6010. All those in favor of that motion, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And Chairman Flurry, item G?
G, motion to approve the Corpus Christi procession parade permit request from St. James Catholic Church for June 11th, 2023.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee. Any questions, any concerns regarding that motion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Snow?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And that is all we have on the agenda. Could I get a motion to adjourn, please? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by everybody. We'll go with Alderman Flurry. All those in favor, please say aye. Anybody want to stay? Thank you for the record. We adjourned at 7:58 PM. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate your time.